Okay, thank you very much. Well, this is a LO twenty-one dash zero zero eighteen. A charter requirement to the Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund Board members. This is the Rules and Legislative Oversight Committee, and we will be hearing from the Youth Fund and hearing from the Board members today. This is different than most executive appointments, whereas the City Council does not have the requirement to vote on anyone. We simply are just giving a platform to the Youth Fund and its prospective Board members to hear from them, as is required from the Fund to come before the Council. And so we give everybody an opportunity to introduce yourself, tell us why you are interested in being a Board member and what you'd like to see. We look forward to that dialogue. I want to thank the Baltimore City Youth Fund for sending over all of your resumes and information, as well as the staff or consultants that serve the Children and Youth Fund. I see we have the Children Youth Fund and Communications, there's Adam Jackson and Shaquille Carbon. So if either one of you want to speak and just talk about the Youth Fund or what the Youth Fund is up to now, we can start with that, and then I will go on to individual and call out each Board member one by one.
So Councilman, this is Davon Love, Community Engagement for the Baltimore City Children Youth Fund. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So Community Engagement, and so in our communication, I mentioned to you that I would be, you know, the rep on behalf of the Baltimore City Children Youth Fund to help talk through just some general updates, and then, as you said, give the prospective Board members an opportunity to talk about their desire and interest to be on the Board.
Sure.
So with your permission, if I can proceed, the, so I'm Davon Love.
Yeah, and if you could also introduce, introduce the people who are with you, because it's hard to see you guys on the screen because it's zoomed out, so.
So, so as I mentioned, Davon Love, Community Engagement for the Baltimore City Children Youth Fund, which we're actually seeing in the background, one of our programs is the ABIS Branson Leadership Institute. So it's our youth development institute that's going to be a part of our process of fulfilling the statutory requirement for a third of the Board to be youth members between the ages of fifteen and twenty-four. So we have some of our participants with us today that are going to observe the hearing, so that's what you see in the background. In terms of those who are going to be with me, so as I mentioned, you know, I'll be able to field questions that are specific to the Youth Fund. Some of the other folks that are on with us are folks that are prospective Board members. So what I want to do for a moment is just put in context how we arrived here in terms of this particular requirement. And then our Councilmen proceed to the process of having the prospective Board members speak about themselves and that they decided to be on the Board. When the ordinance was passed last year in 2020 that established the Youth Fund as an independent entity, there was the process by which there needed to be the transition of the functions and responsibilities that were bestowed upon Associated Black charities, and to take those and transfer those into Baltimore Children and Youth Fund Incorporated, which is its own independent entity that was authorized again by ordinance last year. A part of the work of the Transition Board, in the previous ordinance, there was a list of Transition Board members who had a variety of responsibilities. Those responsibilities included helping to shepherd along the process by which the Transition Board participated in helping to seat the first seating of the Permanent Board, in addition to helping to structure bylaws that helped to facilitate the greatest levels of accountability and transparency. As it relates to Baltimore City Children Youth Fund, this requirement, which is something that we worked with the administration and the Council to put in, this requirement was important to us in the context of making sure that Baltimore City Children Youth Fund is transparent. So in addition to the statutory requirement that there is a yearly hearing from which the Baltimore City Children Youth Fund goes before the Council to allow the public to observe and oversee the operations of the Baltimore City Children Youth Fund, subject to all of the Public Information Act requirements, subject to the Open Meetings Act. Additionally, every year, there's a statutory requirement for the yearly financial plan for us to convene a public hearing and meeting that would allow the public additional oversight. And then in terms of this process, and so in terms of coming to the prospective Board members, in October, there were three publicly held interest meetings where we had almost a hundred people apply who were interested in serving on the Board. And so the Board, the Transition Board engaged in a process by which those who are interested in being prospective Board members were able to receive all the information necessary to make determination as to whether they want to serve on the Board, and that process has led us to today. Some of the Transition Board members have opted to also serve on the first seating of the Permanent Board in order to maintain some institutional memory and continuity institutionally. And Councilman, I think I sent you a document that actually lists out the terms of each of the people that are going to serve on the first Permanent Board that reflect the staggering of the Board members, again, for the purposes of making sure there's institutional memory that goes forward as additional Board members are joined onto the Board in a staggered fashion. So as you mentioned in the opening, what we like to do is just have the prospective Board members, you know, just speak about their desire to be on the Board, to give, you know, the Council, the public an opportunity to hear from them. We have some members that, just due to work constraints, weren't able to join us, there are two in particular. So I'll be reading statements after those who are on the call talk, I'll be reading just some of their statements, so at least that can be read into the record, you know, for the purposes of the public having access to that. So that's kind of it from me by way of introduction.
I thank you for that. And before we get moving to each of the Board members, I want to open up the floor to the members of the Council and Committee if they have any questions first about the Youth Fund in general. Some of the members of the Committee are new Council members for this term, and so any questions that you guys have, feel free to ask now, and then we'll get into the Board members. I see Council Vice President Middleton's hand raised. You can start.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's more of not asking a question at this time, but I just want to share with the Committee that I kind of was on board and following this organization when it first started. And I remember transparency, transparency starting at the very beginning. There were meetings, several meetings that was held at, I think, that organization was, what was it, Strive over there on Monroe Street? I think they used that building and was having several meetings, just getting this organization together and remembering that, at the end of the day, the reason that they are really in control of this is because one of the previous Council President, which started this, Mayor, former Mayor Young, wanted that transparency and take it out of, you know, the government's hands. I go to various functions and know that Davon Love in particular and several others that are part of this Youth Fund have, you know, they're very open, they are throughout the community, very conscientious of what they're doing and just have a lot of respect of what they have accomplished so far. So on that note, and congrats to you, Davon, as well, for getting a very prestigious award from We Are Us, that organization that's on the streets particularly every Monday. And Davon is connected, and a number of the people that work in this organization is connected with them as well. So just wanted to kind of share that information with the Committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other Committee members with questions? If we can just get a quick overview of where we stand today, Mr. Love, how, when was the first allocation put in from the city to the Youth Fund? Like, when did, when did we start?
So the Youth Fund, that was an initial ordinance that passed in December of 2017. That initial ordinance authorized Associated Black Charities to serve as a transition entity, an incubation for the permanent entity. So the first dollars for the Youth Fund were allocated, I believe, in 2018. So that was, that was, 2018 was the first year where there was a grant review team convened for the purpose of making decisions about the first grantee cohort.
Okay, so, and I assume every year after that, the Fund has received the money required by the ordinance, correct?
So the, the way that it works is that, you know, we've been in connection with the Department of Finance, and so there's a process by which drawdowns are done commensurate to the needs of the Youth Fund. So whether it's the operations, whether it is drawdowns for allocations for grantees for the first cohort, there was no, there is no set cycle, but we work closely with the Director of Finance in order to ensure that the dollars and the funds are not directly given to the Youth Fund. So just, you know, for the public, for the public to be clear, is that the way that the ordinance was written, it is three percent of the city's property tax dollars to go to a non-lapsing fund that sits with the city, right? So those monies don't sit with Baltimore Children's City, with the Baltimore Children Youth Fund. Those dollars sit in that non-lapsing fund that is essentially roped off by the Director of Finance for the purpose of those allocations coming to the Youth Fund. And when we submit those requests, just as the case with any invoice with any other business transaction, all the appropriate, you know, supporting documentation for those drawdowns are attached to those requests.
Thank you for that clarity. And so from 2018, so I guess there's four years worth allocation. So how much, how much money has been allocated in those four years to the Fund?
So I'm not, I don't, I don't have that off the top of my head, Councilman. I can get, I can get that information back to you.
If you could, that would be great. Do you know how much money has been awarded so far to nonprofits?
I believe about nine point eight the first year and about seven million, nine point eight million the first year, about seven million the second year. And then there's also, one of the important things about the Youth Fund is technical assistance. So in addition to direct grants, there's an emphasis on technical assistance, which is an important part of the values that was set forth by the Task Force that preceded the legislation that I mentioned that passed in December 2017. So those technical assistance, it's not necessarily direct grants, but it's to provide support for grassroots organizations. And in fact, the Baltimore City Children Youth Fund, in addition to providing technical assistance for the seventy-plus organizations in the first grantee cohort, there's also been public technical assistance provided. We actually just ended a series of technical assistance for youth development, and we're about to begin a new series of technical publicly available, free to the public, technical assistance on the issue of violence prevention. So in addition to the grants, there's also been technical assistance. So again, in terms of the exact dollar amounts of all of those things, that's, you know, again, I was prepared today to talk specifically about the Board. I can get you the information about those specific dollar amounts and writing.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great. And so has there anything been awarded in year three or year four yet?
So what we've done, and this was something that we mentioned at the April hearing, is that the institution, Baltimore City Children Youth Fund, as I mentioned, is in its transitional phase. One of the things, one of the biggest learnings of the Youth Fund was that having so many grantees at one time really drained much of the administrative infrastructure of the Youth Fund. So we've been spending most of our time at this point building the infrastructure of the Youth Fund to be fully functional. In light of that, what we've done is we have an aligned grant-making strategy, right? Which, again, we announced that during the hearing in April. The aligned grant-making strategy includes a partnership with the Baltimore Summer Funding Collaborative, which is, which I believe, I don't, again, I don't know the exact dates from when that application closes, but I know it's been open and available on the Youth Fund, provided two million dollars with the funds to support the Baltimore City Funding Collaborative. Additionally, in terms of aligned grant-making, we supported B-City, which is a initiative in West Baltimore that is with youth violence prevention. So I think about a million dollars went to them. This is a project that also subgrants to smaller organizations that are aligned with the work of B-City. And so, so, and so as a replacement for direct grants, the aligned grant-making is our attempt to push dollars out while allowing the institution to be able to do what it needs to effectively do the transition work and building the infrastructure for BCYF to be fully operational.
Okay, thank you for that. And so before we move on to the, to the Board members, if it can, if you can just write, jot this down as Committee requests, first to provide a year-by-year of how much money has been allocated to the funds per year for these past four years, and then how much money has been awarded each year so that we can see what the remaining is, and then also if you can just include that other information that you mentioned, like what the administrative expenses have been to date, you know, by year also, so that we can see that and see some of the technical assistance, you know, in that, in that outline. We'll now move to the individual Board members. I'll call out your name. If you're on the call, please introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about why you're interested in serving on this Board or what you'd like to see, and anybody who is not here, Mr. Love, if you would like to read a statement from them, that would be fine. So the first one on the list is Deion Cartwright. Mr. Love, do you?
Hi, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Deion Cartwright. I am a resident and homeowner in Baltimore City, grew up in central Virginia, but I moved to Baltimore back in 1999. Spent most of my career working with and funding communities in Baltimore through my sixteen years of work at the Baltimore Community Foundation. I manage the Foundation's Neighborhood Grants Program where I granted out millions of dollars to support various programs and projects in communities in Baltimore City and Baltimore County. I now work for a national organization that serves the philanthropic sector in all of North America. I oversee an equity-based leadership development fellowship program, which is focused on helping those that work in philanthropy develop their racial equity lens and improve their grant-making approach in low-income communities and communities of color all over the U.S. Although I come across as quiet and introverted at times, I am extremely hard worker who strives for perfection. I am viewed as a leader in the philanthropic sector and respected by many, both locally and nationally. I've always had a commitment to listening to those that often get overlooked, supporting those who are often not funded or breaking bread with those most marginalized. That's why I engage with the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund, their work aligned with my own work and my own values. I'm interested in being a part of the inaugural Board of the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund. I've spent the last eighteen months volunteering with BCYF and currently sit as the Transition Board Chair. I have committed to serving an additional year to ensure a smooth transition to the new president and new members of the Permanent Board as well as the executive team. I recognize that this is a unique opportunity that BCYF has to support the children, youth, and young adults of Baltimore City, creating and supporting opportunities for our young people to lead, thrive, and succeed. And I'm committed to advancing this important work throughout the next year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next up is Kristen Allen.
So Kristen's not going to be able to be on, but I can read her statement into the record if you want to.
All right, so this is a statement from Kristen Allen. My name is Kristen Allen. I'm a resident of East Baltimore, specifically Broadway East community. Community Engagement has been a source of joy for the past ten years. I've served in many capacities from founding and running a nonprofit to serving on my community associations board. I've been able to engage with BCYF in a couple of different capacities, but most recently as co-Vice Chair for the Baltimore City Children Youth Fund Transition Board. I'm proud of the work that our team has been able to accomplish and look forward to serving on the Permanent Board to continue to shift narratives and encouraging opportunities for youth and grassroots organizations. So that's a statement from Kristen Allen.
Okay, and Jaclyn Cadwell.
You on mute, Mr. Staff?
Can, can you hear me?
Yeah, I need a T-shirt that says I'm on mute. So hello, everyone. I'm Jaclyn Caldwell. I am a resident and homeowner in the greatest community in the world, which is the Greater Mondomin Community where I live. I served for eight years as the President of the Greater Mondomin Coordinating Council. We were able to bring in over eighty million dollars in revenue to our community as far as development. I'm interested in being a part of the Board. I've been on the Transition Board for eighteen months because I believe in the values that we espouse. I've also worked in philanthropy for over eighteen years. Have a great, you know, relationship with grantees and the grant work itself. And I believe that the way that we structure our program for the Baltimore City and Youth Fund will enable institutions that have been left out and overlooked to be a part of the process, to engage with our young people, to have them be all the best that they can be. I'm also a member of the Innovation Works Board, Neighborhood Housing Services of Baltimore, the Bear School, and I also worked as a consultant at Touchpoint at Mondomin Mall. I'm the President of our local neighborhood association, Whittier Monroe, which is where I live. And I'm just really proud to be a part of this. Going forward, I've agreed to serve for another year to help our new incoming Board members and our incoming president. I know that this is a really important work that we're doing, and we're thinking outside of the box, and that's what I know that philanthropy needs, and that's what I know that the grantee audience needs. So I'm really proud to be a part of it.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Next up is Catherine Benton Jones.
All right, so she also can't make it, so I will read her biography. Catherine Benton Jones served as first, served as, on the first grant review team of the Baltimore City Children Youth Fund, and is a community advocate for Baltimore City Children and Youth. She's the President of Change for Real, a resident-led development effort in Old Town, and President of Chick Web Recreation Center. She has a long career working for the City of Baltimore, including twenty years in the Baltimore City Law Department and fifteen years at the Housing Authority of Baltimore City and Resident Services as the Manager of Residents and Resident Staffing Program. Ms. Benton Jones managed the support group called It's Your Turn for five, Your Turn for Five Years, and she is the founder and pastor of New Creations Ministry Incorporated. Ms. Benton Jones is an advocate for those in low-income areas and communities. List work advising Douglas Homes Tenant Council and the Village Love Residents Boulder. She holds a bachelor's degree from North Carolina College of Theology. So that's Catherine Benton Jones.
Thank you. Next up is John Morris.
Hopefully you can hear me. I attempted to unmute myself.
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. Morris. Thank you.
Hey, I'm John Morris, and I'm a current member of the Transition Board for the Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund. I currently hold the position of Board Treasurer. I've been included on the slate of candidates to continue as members of the Permanent Board for the organization, and I've been pleased to serve as a member of the Transition Board. And with the approval of the presented slate of candidates, I look forward to continuing to serve the remarkable mission of this organization. The intergenerational leadership aspects, at least aspirations, rather, that the organization's mission articulates are embodied in my experience of civic volunteerism. Having been active in civic endeavors in Baltimore for more than forty years, starting as a young lawyer, I'm now at the age of sixty-eight, so I've known what it's been like to be, to have been, rather, both the youngest person at the table, and now, in many of my endeavors, I'm often the oldest. I began my civic life as a young associate at Vimal Batra and Howard in nineteen eighty, maturing to become a partner in the firm in nineteen eighty-six before leaving the firm in nineteen ninety-three. During that time, I served as the first pro bono coordinator where I expanded my activities to embrace a life of public service largely through membership on boards. I was among the first members of the Board for Associated Black Charities in nineteen eighty-six, serving on the Board until 2007. Since nineteen eighty-six, I've served on the Boards of the following organizations: The Maryland Volunteer Lawyer Service, the Homeless Persons Representation Project, the Walters Art Museum, the Public Justice Center, the American Civil Liberties Union of Maryland, and the Baltimore Freedom Academy Foundation, as well as a member of the Change for Real Community Corporation, the entity that Ms. Jones was on, working with the residents in Old Town in East Baltimore. I have been active professionally and as a member of the Baltimore civic community at the cutting edge of change to address the city's larger problems and to realize a new vision of possibility for all the people of Baltimore. I'm particularly confident about the work of Baltimore Children and Youth Fund in advancing such an affirming vision, and I look forward to your support in continuing with that mission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up, Kiana Gorham.
I know Kiana is on, I think she may need to be elevated.
Hold on one second. Okay. Yes, she is now on there. Richard, can you please elevate?
She's on, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
How are you?
Introduce yourself.
My name is Kiana Gorham. I'm just getting in because I was in another meeting, so I'm not sure what exactly it is that you need from me.
Oh, no problem. So we're just asking you to introduce yourself, tell us a little bit about yourself and what interests you about the Baltimore City Youth Fund and why you're interested in serving as a Board member and what you're looking to see, see out of the Youth Fund.
All right, so my name's Kiana Gorham. I am not a Baltimore native. I'm an upstate New York child that's from the orchards. But I moved down here about fifteen years ago, and Baltimore quickly became home for me. I serve as the Director of Programs at Wide Angle Youth Media and also have my own business, the BFA Institute, where I offer coaching consultations and leadership cultivation. I'm interested in serving because I believe in making things better where you are rather than leaving for other places that are deemed better. I think Baltimore, as any place with anyone that would love it, but Baltimore, because I love being in Baltimore, I want to make it better. I'm very much so inclined or pay attention to legacy. I'm about service, and I believe in being the change that I want to see. I think that this is an opportunity to serve with like-minded individuals and to elevate Baltimore to what it could be. So that's me.
Thank you very much for that. The next person up is Lisa Moloch.
Hello.
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay, sorry. Sorry, my bad. Can you guys see me? I can't see myself.
We can see you, but, we can hear you, but we cannot see you.
Okay. All right, if y'all can hear me, give me one second. I'm trying to get this. I'm sorry. How y'all doing today? Sorry about that. Can y'all see me?
Now we can.
Okay, how y'all doing today?
How you doing?
Hi, hi. My name is Lisa Moloch. I'm the founder. I grew out of both regions.
We can't hear you anymore.
Okay. Can you hear me? Or do you want, I'm having some really bad reception, guys. Sorry.
So if you turn off your camera, it probably will use less bandwidth.
Okay.
We can probably hear you. There you go.
Can y'all hear me now? Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, so I founded Let's Ride Baltimore back in 2016 to work with young people who have lost loved ones to gun violence, because I'm also a survivor of gun violence, almost being shot at sixteen and lost so many loved ones to gun violence. So we founded Let's Ride Baltimore to work with them. I'm also a member of the Health I'm also a member of the Health Department Youth Violence Prevention Committee. Um, and we work to decrease violence in the homes. So we work with youth and their families. Um, I'm also a member of Moms Demand Action, um, where we, we worked, we actually testify adherents and work on legislation for police reform that passed, um, this year as the Maryland House Accountability Act. We worked on house bills that require a background check on shotguns, um, and long, and, um, trade shows. I've also written letters to the mayor, the current and previous mayor, for proclamations to make Baltimore July the fourth National Day of Remembrance for the, um, for the hundred lives that's lost to gun violence every day. Um, also work with the current mayor and city council, um, Zeke Cohen, on the bill that actually, um, reallocated three million dollars from the Baltimore City U Fund to Baltimore City Public Schools. And the reason why I want to be, um, a board member for the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund is because I want to support the board, um, and, and help them. Um, and like, uh, one of my fellow board members said, with like-minded people, but also hold the board accountable to make sure, um, that the funds are being used where they're said they're be, they're being used. So, um, and I love the work that they're doing, even working hard these years to make sure that the funds get out to the young people. And I commend the work that they're doing and I just want to support it.
Uh, thank you for that and thank you, uh, for all of your service and your willingness to, uh, participate on this board as well. Uh, the next person up is Marcus Pollak.
So he's had some trouble getting in, so we've asked him to call in. Um, would it be okay, Chairman, to, to come back to him while we're working on getting him to call in and making that work?
Sure, we only have one person left, uh, and that is Larry Simmons. And I see Larry on my screen, so take it away.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
So I'm, I'm kind of coming in to use. Webex never works well for me. Um, but, good afternoon. Uh, Baltimore resident. I actually live here in Edison Village. Um, been living here all my life. Um, I am currently the chair of the, of the Baltimore, of the Parent and Community Advisory Board of Baltimore City Public Schools and, uh, the tre, the treasurer of B-City as a matter of fact. I'm also serve on the boards of Wide Angle, uh, Newsong and the Public Justice Center. Um, with over twenty years of experience in youth and community development, I'm really working closely with B-City and creating, uh, the community, uh, granting process of, of four or five years ago. Um, and just, um, being able to serve my community, the way that I, the way that I have been serving over the last twenty years, um, is extremely important to me. Um, one of my, the main reasons of wanting to be a part of the Baltimore Children and Youth Funds Board is the, is the opportunity to work with our community in a better way and in a different way. Um, really making sure that there's access and opportunity for the small guys who are actually doing some of the work that many of us can't do. Um, and I think this is a great opportunity for those folks and I just want to be a part of that work. Thanks.
Uh, thank you very much. Is, uh, Mr. Pollak in yet? I did not see him.
Uh, do you know if there's any phone number? Cause we asked him to call in because he was having trouble with.
Yeah, there's no, there's no phone, there's no phone call-in users on the attendee list. I'll give him one more minute, uh, before we adjourn.
Um, I'm actually going to give him a call.
Okay.
Alright, Chairman, so I have him on speakerphone. I don't know, um, you know, this'll, if this'll work. Uh, Mr. Pollak, can you, can you speak? We can see if we can hear you.
I can speak as Latin. In fact, I'll use my Baltimore voice if I need to.
Alright, so can y'all, can y'all hear?
Surprisingly, that's clear.
Alright.
There you go.
Alright, Pollak.
Bye. By the way, I apologize that, uh, when the technology works well, it's wonderful. Uh, if it doesn't work well, it can be a beast. Thankfully, we've got some ways of, uh, working around the technology which has allowed me to be here today. Thank you very much for having me, uh, speak with you about, uh, participation on the Baltimore City Youth Fund. Uh, let me, let me first offer a word of thanks to, uh, Mayor Young and others, uh, who were supporters of this, uh, this, what I would say is a groundbreaking uh, uh, piece of public policy. And I say that not because of, uh, the money that's been assigned to it. Quite frankly, if you look at that, it's a mere, uh, drip in the bucket for what we need to, uh, uh, take care of the scale of the challenge that we have in Baltimore City. Uh, I think that, uh, the, uh, the millions of dollars, the twelve or fourteen or whatever, how much there is can be used strategically in order to, uh, move in the areas that we think are important for youth development, uh, and spawn things to happen that otherwise might not. So I think that, uh, strategically done, uh, the dollars can be used to, to, uh, uh, bring forth a, uh, a very healthy return on that investment. Let me tell you who I am and, and how I come to this. Uh, I was born in West Baltimore, uh, very much in the throes of, uh, violence, drugs and, and, uh, criminality. Quite frankly, I didn't make it out of, uh, of Baltimore, although I could because simply, uh, said it's important for me to, uh, to make a contribution to, uh, to my people and, and to my community. So, uh, I left a, a very lucrative career as an executive, uh, in, uh, in Washington DC to do the work that needs to get done here in Baltimore. I was building systems for, uh, the, uh, uh, the, um, uh, preparedness system, uh, in this country. But I, quite frankly, was one of, uh, I would hope a lot of folks who who just, um, uh, riding on their train each day and reading about the things that were happening in Baltimore, I just could not abide anymore. So when I, uh, told my colleagues in, in Washington DC, uh, what I was about to do, now mind you, I'm at the pinnacle of my career. They thought I'd lost my mind. But it's important, uh, uh, to me, uh, to, uh, to be a part of, of what I see as a change that can happen for Baltimore. Uh, there are a couple of things that, uh, that mark uh, my view of the world as it relates to youth development. Quite frankly, I started my career as a street worker for the YMCA and we use the, uh, the YMCA, uh, facility as a way to connect with youngsters in the city of Baltimore, Dred Hill and other places. Uh, that led me, uh, work with the Milton S. Eisenhower Foundation and, uh, the co-investigator of a, uh, a study that looked at, uh, resilience among, uh, young, uh, people to, uh, criminality, uh, drugs and violence. And we, we for four years, we're forth, uh, a number of principles that are enduring. One, young people need a sanctuary. They need a safe place to be. Two, they need, uh, adults who are authentic and caring to support them. And then you need leadership opportunities for these young people. And when you do this, uh, as a matter of best practice or promising practice, or if you like a standard, you'll find, I think, that youngsters, no matter where they are in Baltimore City, will fare better than if you don't use these as, uh, founding principles. Let me also say that, uh, that work led me to, uh, an understanding that, uh, thankfully, uh, Baltimore City has a number of hundreds, if not more, the good, solid, uh, uh, organizations that are rooted in the grass that have been toiling for years. And I, I see this opportunity as a way of recognizing the good work that these folks are doing in Baltimore City and building capacity for them to do more. So, so part of, of my view of the world has to do with, uh, accountability. I don't think that we can, uh, have a hundred kids, uh, be successful in Cry Victory where you got, when you have thousands of youngsters that need to take the same, uh, uh, kind of support. So we, we really have to build a system amongst those organizations that are working to be able to deal with the level of challenge at the scale that it's presented. And I think we have an opportunity to do this, uh, with the, the Baltimore City Youth Fund and others uh, who are, and have been toiling in the salt mines, so to speak, for years. So I, I, uh, I close my remarks by saying that, uh, um, I appreciate what has been done to create the fund. I think that there are systems in place that has, have to be done that, uh, I certainly would like to be a part of. I've done this for the federal government and the country. I want to be able to do this for, for my city. Uh, and then, and then in closing, I really want to give thanks, uh, firstly, and more importantly to God, because I was one of those young people that had in his mind that I wouldn't see it past twenty-five and I have gone long past that. And it's nothing but the grace of God that has allowed me to do that. And then I, I want to thank publicly Dana Molden Cole, uh, who pulled my coattail to tell me about this opportunity when, uh, I wasn't paying attention to it because she knew that this was the kind of work that would, uh, be consistent with what I, what I want to do from this point on until the time that they put me away. So with that, again, thank you. And I just broke my, uh, I just broke my, um, uh, this part here with, yes, Janice, I'm okay. But, uh, I guess this is the worst that could happen. Alright, this thing fell down.
Alright.
I'm sorry, uh, but, uh, thank you for, uh, for giving me this opportunity and I look forward to doing the hard work, uh, that is required for the Baltimore City Youth Fund.
Alright, thank you very much. Uh, that concludes all of the board members. Any, uh, members of the committee have any questions for any of these board members or for the U Fund before we close out? Uh, seeing none, uh, thank you all for participating in this hearing and in coming to introduce yourself. Uh, and thank you for your willingness to serve on this important board. Um, and we can close out this hearing. Thank you so much.
Thank you.